Order the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting, October 10th, 2011. Here past 6:00 P.M. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norikus.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
And Henry Quant.
Here. And we'll do the pledge of allegiance, please. I thank everyone for coming tonight. I think our record continues with, you know, having a nice audience. Appreciate you all coming out. Before we get to actual agenda items, I'd like to point out to people that there are agendas in the back. It's been changed a bit from the one that may have gone out or did actually go out originally in the packet. So, councilors, you need to use the one that was on your desk here and we'll just keep working rather than the one on your screen. And also, I would appreciate the opportunity right now to inform the public. If you'll so note, council is wearing pink ribbons. That's in -- October is Awareness Month for breast cancer. And so, it seemed more appropriate than a proclamation. Visible attire seems to make a big difference. And so, I thank council and staff for wearing the pink ribbons and would ask all those who need to or should be to visit your doctors and get checked because certainly breast cancer can attack both male and female. So, thank you. With that, we'll go to the agenda item, and that's comments from citizens present. The purpose of comments from citizens is to allow citizens to present information or raise an issue regarding items not on the agenda or regarding agenda items that do not include a public hearing. Now, we do have a opportunity for comments over on K-12, and that's new fees. So, you could hold if that's your issue to then. A time limit of five minutes per citizen shall apply. I've asked city recorder to utilize the light system so that the speakers will be informed as to their remaining time and so that we have consistency. As a general rule, this is not a time for an exchange of questions. However, at the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor can discuss or raise questions regarding something presented by a citizen. As you come to the table, please state your name and address and speak right into the mic. And we have a list.
My name's Yvette Geiser. I live at 3445 Northeast 40th Court, Lincoln City, Oregon. I'm a member of the Lincoln City Vacation Home Association, and I'm here speaking for them. The Lincoln City Vacation Home Association is a nonprofit membership organization for property owners, property managers, businesses, and concerned citizens who oppose restrictive regulation of vacation homes in Lincoln City, Oregon. We support our community, and we recognize our efforts to bring tourism dollars to our city, and we recognize that they require collaboration with all who live here. Our membership already includes a significant portion of the VRDs in Lincoln City that are licensed. We support a balanced approach to vacation rental regulation in our city, and we're working with vacation rental owners to improve our operations and reduce the impacts that we have on full-time residents. We recently established a community liaison committee that is designed to work with citizens and attempt to resolve problems. The committee has established a phone number for complaints about VRDs and its public record. We are working with North Lincoln Sanitary and with Tina French to improve recycling and trash management of vacation rental homes. We are developing VRD operating standards designed to support much-needed tourism but reduce the impact of tourism on our neighborhoods. We are working on broader plans for vacation rental owners and managers to govern themselves, and you'll hear more about that in the coming months. We are gathering hard data about the positive and the negative impacts of vacation rentals on the community, and we'll be providing that information back to the community and the city so that it can be considered as we move forward in our discussion about vacation rental regulation. We have already conducted a thorough review of the existing VRD ordinances and will eventually present recommendations to make the law more effective. In order for our organization to be most effective, we need to be able to work in partnership with the city. We applaud the city's initiative to hire a dispute resolution consultant and form a VRD team that will work towards improving the way VRDs operate in this city. It is essential that our group, Lincoln City Vacation Home Association, and our members are included in that process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yvette, before you leave, would you mind giving us the phone number for the public on the complaint?
I don't have.
Okay.
But I needed to.
Well, I was just trying to get it over the air to.
Over the air? Okay. I'll ask one of our members.
Thank you. Doug Coats? Yeah?
I'm Doug Coats. I'm from Portland, Oregon. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Vacation Home Association here in Lincoln City. And I want to emphasize that we really do appreciate the initiative on the part of the city to put together a consulting firm and a team to work on the VRD issue. I had the opportunity to speak with the mayor about this some this past week, and I learned a little bit more about what the plan is, and it sounds good to me. We do have some concerns, and I wanted to lay out a few of them specifically. We believe that the city should direct the mediator consultant and the group to work towards a result that addresses documented problems and addresses community-wide goals that have been established by the city. Addressing documented problems will help give any new laws that are passed validity, help the group members make more informed decisions, and help the group avoid some of the confrontational behavior that has taken place in the past. Consideration of the city's goals will assure that we don't end up with a law that works against economic development and tourism goals that the city is spending money on in other areas. In the event that any new law is contested legally, being able to show that the group worked based on factual information and worked towards established city goals will be important for the city. Based on our understanding of what the mediator and the group are supposed to accomplish, we believe that the $50,000 budget that has been allocated for this towards this effort is inadequate. Specifically, after learning more about what is expected perhaps out of this consultant, we don't think that you're going to find a consultant to do six months or more of work on this issue under that budget. We don't see any resources for research and documentation of the problems with VRDs, and we don't think that the city staff has the time or the expertise to provide all the research and documentation that will be needed. We don't see any resources available for independent legal opinions or assistance that might be needed if the city is unable -- if the city staff is unable to provide the necessary information. $50,000 is a lot of money. Just want to be realistic about what we can get done with that amount of money. Number three, we think the proposal in its current form is very vague about what interests will be represented on the VRD team, how members will be chosen, and whether or not the interests and concerns of VRDs will be fairly represented in the makeup of the group. Again, it's important that VRDs have equal representation on this group so that any resulting laws will have legitimacy and the concerns of VRD owners are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Barry Rice, and I live at 3341 Northeast 32nd Place in Portland, and I own a home in Lincoln City at 3865 Northwest Jetty. I'm -- I'd like to read into the record the phone number for the complaint. Suddenly, that's just come upon us, so I thought you'd be interested. It's 541-264-5701.
Fifty-seven or sixty?
Fifty-seven oh one. Five-seven zero one. I have a few comments regarding the item on your agenda. I believe it's J-9, request for proposal draft regarding consulting services for vacation rental dwelling review. These comments are regarding two suggestions that the Lincoln City Vacation Homeowners Association has to the city. First, starting with the second sentence under the section for the role of the consultant, we'd like you consider substituting the following. The desired end product is a regulatory agreement developed by consensus in the sense of widespread agreement but not necessarily unanimity of the VRD team that, A, resolves documented problems with VRDs; B, is consistent with the city's economic development and tourism goals; C, is fair to all concerned parties; and D, can be adopted and successfully implemented by the city. The second suggestion is in paragraph three under the role of the consultant concerning who are members of this group. The city expects representatives from the following stakeholders group to be members of the VRD team. One, VRD owners, vacation rental dwelling owners; VRD property managers, those will be local property managers; and others who work with the VRDs and generally favor the role of VRDs in the community. This group shall consist of up to four persons, who shall be chosen by the VRD visitors, the Vacation Rental Dwelling Association, as representing the local VRDs. The second group is the representatives of the local community and local businesses who have concerns about VRDs. This group shall consist of four persons, who shall be chosen by the city, and one representative who will be employed by the city or an elected official. These are the two suggestions that the Lincoln City Vacation Homeowners Association has regarding the draft. That'll be before you this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Would you mind sharing your written comments? Hand them to the city so then we'll have your paragraph catch. And we have a Miller Lee.
Good evening, Mayor.
Counsel.
Um, I wanted to propose here to the city.
Excuse me. Go ahead and name and address.
Oh, Miller Lee, 404 Southeast Highway 101, Lincoln City.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
I purchased a house at 1032 Northeast Highway 101 about four years ago from a David Hawke. At the time, this house needed a lot of work. I had worked on it for the past three years, and the house needed like a lot, a lot of repairs. I purchased the house from David Hawke. There was no meter at the time there when I purchased this house. The meter was removed because Mr. Hawke did not pay the water bill. He told me that it would only cost $400 to $500 to put the meter back on, so I took his word for it. I purchased the house. I did not know that this bill would be so costly. All of the lines is existing at the property. All of it is new at the meter, and all I want to do is just hook up the water meter so I can rent it out and start paying for my mortgage because I'm getting really, really low on funds. And that's what I wanted to propose to the city of this building. There's no meter there or nothing like that, so I wanted to see what you guys could do to help me out, to see if we can put a meter back on there at my property.
Mr. Miller, this is not really the time for this kind of stiff, but let me have a question. Have you gone through Public Works, or would that be the perfect place to at least raise the issue first about the cost and the process? Mr. Miller?
Uh, yeah, I talked to them, and they said that they're going to have some older pictures and stuff like that to submit to the council to see if we could, someone, if we could try to take care of this situation.
There's a, I presume what's being asked for is the system development charges. After a meter's been removed for a period of time, and that's specified, I believe, by ordinance, then those system development charges come due again. I'm not sure there's any latitude under that ordinance, although council can always change it, but I'm happy to. I was unaware of this. I'm happy to review the ordinance and that situation. And if I, if there's no relief at my end of it, then the next step would be for council to review the ordinance and see if they wish to change it.
Okay. So, what we want to do is go ahead and make sure that this comes, and Mr. Hawke will review, as he said, both your request and the ordinance and kind of deal with that. That's typically how things get, you know, done.
Okay.
But thanks for bringing it to our attention. Again, purchasing real estate, it can be a tricky business, and getting all things in writing upfront and understanding is important.
Right, right. I will say we're real tickled to see that property fixed up. It was, from what I understand, code enforcement had a real issue with it for a number of years.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see what we can do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from citizens who have not signed up as yet and would like to make a comment? All right. Hearing none, then moving to, oh, employee appreciation. Tina Nelson. Is Tina not here? Move to the next meeting? Is that?
Um, yeah, unless we have word otherwise that she won't attend, we'll just put it on again, and if for some reason she doesn't wish to attend, then you and I can present it.
That'd be great. Okay? Just for those interested, she's the youth program coordinator at Driftwood Library and is, just be recognizing 10 years of service. So, we like to honor our long-term employees and, as we do all employees. All right. Moving then to consent agenda. In the consent agenda, the items are considered routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any counselor may request that an item be removed for separate discussion and action. The consent agenda items, maybe Ms. Cal sees this would be a good time for you to go for clarity before we.
Just a clarifying comment. One of the items that you have on the consent agenda is Resolution 211-30. That's declaring the results of the special election. That resolution attaches as Exhibit A the actual canvas of votes. We have that exhibit in the room. The city recorder has it. It's just not actually attached to the resolution copy you have, but it is in the room, which is a requirement that we have it here and available if anybody wants to see it.
Great.
Mayor, I move that we.
If I can, let me.
First?
Yeah, let me read them so we can be of record. The consent agenda consists of requests. You read ordinance first by title only. Minutes of the meeting, September 26, 2011. Mo's ground lease, amendment number four. Resolution number 2011-30, a resolution declaring the official results of the canvas of votes of the special election held in the City of Lincoln City, Oregon on September 20th, 2011. And number six, agreement, Lincoln City Police Officers Association. And with that, any further discussion? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove number four and number six.
Any other items that council would like to have further discussion on? Hearing none. Here, a motion for approval of the consent agenda consisting items number two, three, and five.
So moved.
Thank you, Ed.
We have a motion with a second to approve the consent and agenda items, two, three, and five. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, with the nay. Hearing none. And Mr. Norikus, number four, Mo's ground lease.
Thank you. Mr. Hawke, could you give us a brief description of this item?
We have a lease on the property that Mo sits on and a little bit more. Not a lot more than the building footprint, just a little bit more. The lease is for 40 years, goes from 1982 through 2021. We're at a period now where the rent is, the lease amount, the annual lease amount is subject to either renegotiation or arbitration, with arbitration being specified, the means of which property value is determined. The parties have met and agreed to an extension of the lease with the annual cost of living escalator. So, there's no need to do arbitration, which is, of course, expensive and risky for both sides, and normally we wish to avoid that. So, we're at the end of the current year lease, which is $47,790 a year, and the, that amount will then be adjusted for January by a cost of living amount specified by, I believe, the, yeah, the U.S. city average for the past year.
Thank you very much.
And that's for, I'm sorry, that's for the next five-year period. There'll be another five-year period after that, again, subject to renegotiation or arbitration. So, there's this coming five-year period and one more left.
Thank you. And could you give us a brief description of number six, the agreement with the?
Why don't we deal with number four first?
All right. I'd move that we approve number four, Mo's ground lease, amendment number four.
And this would be to approve, to have the, authorize the city manager execute the amendment number four on the lease on behalf of the city?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number four to the lease on behalf of the city with Mo's. Could we have a roll call, please?
Norikus.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And number six.
Brief description on that, please, Mr. Hawke.
Sure. This is a three-year contract with the Lincoln City Police Employees Association, beginning July 1 of the current year and going for three years. It's the contract by which we operate in all manners with our employees in the police department. And in particular, it spells out compensation or how compensation will be adjusted over the next three years. What's remarkable about this particular three-year period is we've made a lot of housekeeping changes, but what's really remarkable is that we've had a slight change in how pay will be done. One area is in the vacation cash out currently. If an employee, I shouldn't call it just vacation, it's leave, it's leave because the police officer has a combination of sick leave, holiday, or holiday leave and vacation leave together. So, that leave has a cash out provision, which is if it's not used, anything over 250 hours gets cashed out each year. And that has financial implications to the city. So, this puts some limits that, on that cash out over the next three years, where that limit will ratchet down somewhat. Because we want people to take vacation. It's a high-stress job. It's a job that needs some time off, and we want people to take the vacation rather than looking for just the cash. So, it allows some cash out, but it, or the change emphasis there. And it also, instead of simply cost of living or simply market, this current year and in the future years, there's incentives for living within a distance that favors a response time that we can live with. Because obviously, in a severe emergency, we need our officers here. So, this offers an incentive for a realistic response time. It offers an incentive for fitness. That's an, maybe surprisingly, that's an unusual requirement for police departments. It's very common with fire departments, but it's pretty rare, at least in Oregon, for police departments. So, there's incentives there for fitness and continued and expanded training incentives. So, it switches a little emphasis away from just cost of living to incentives that we think will benefit the employees and benefit the city.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I might add, if I could, because for me, another component of this was around the insurance piece.
Oh, yeah.
And not to, you know, go with you, but.
No, please, thank you.
Sir, but I thought that was real important where we were able to, if I've got it right, change deductibility so the employee has choices.
Right.
And the deductibility is getting larger or start ratcheting up.
There's some cost containment there, and it's done in a way that I believe that it's not harmful to the employees or not very harmful to the employees. Keep in mind that in public employment, particularly police departments, up until just a few years ago, almost virtually all cities offered 100% insurance on a Cadillac plan. That's no longer realistic, and our employees recognize that, as do we. And so, there's been some change there in regards to what plan, something less than a Cadillac plan and employee participation in it. So, yeah, thank you for mentioning that. That was an important part of it.
I move that we approve consent agenda item number six, the agreement, Lincoln City Police Officers Association.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second, the agreement with the Lincoln City Police Officers Association. Roll call, vote, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Ellingson.
Yes.
Norikus.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. At this time, it would be time for oath of office and the seating of our new city council person. Ethy Steer, if you're going to take care of here? Mr. Alex Ward, thank you for coming. Thank you, Kathy.
Testing, testing.
We're sticking you in the corner, far corner, a lot of seniority and knowledge is between
Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
you and this way.
Okay.
You know, all the way to the far. So, welcome, Councilor Ward, we really do appreciate you filling out the council seat. This is the first time this year we've had a full council, I think, so, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's my great pleasure and honor.
Would you, we're not going to give you a lot of time, but I'd even give you a couple of minutes if you had some remarks, or?
You know, I don't have a lot. I'd just like to thank everybody for all the support, it's been astounding. But outside of that, you know, I really appreciate it, and having said all that, you know, let's get to work.
All right. Well, we're going to take a short recess to, we bought some cake from your ward, and flowers from your ward, so we certainly want to enjoy the fruits. So, we'll adjourn, you know, 10 minutes, you know, he doesn't have that many friends, so, you know. Please join us.
On record.
Thank you, thank you. We'll come back into session. And thank you all again for sharing with us the celebration with Counselor Ward. Again, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We meet the second and fourth Mondays, by the way, you know, not Tuesdays.
Mondays.
Mondays, six o'clock, so you know, try to be on time if you would.
Twice a month?
Yeah.
That's...
And, you know, this seems like an appropriate time, Mr. Hocker, to maybe tell, remind the audience that though Mr. Counselor Ward came from planning, we don't make a habit of stealing from planning. You know, Chester came, certainly served time at planning. Mr. Counselor Quant and Counselor Eggleton didn't come through planning. Did you, well, you've had a hiatus, Mr. Counselor Sprague, so...
I came from City Council with four previous terms, and I'm still working my way to learn the process.
So historically, council has stolen...
So once, once again, though, the opportunity exists to come direct, you know, so, you know, when elections come up again, I just don't want things that we always have to steal from planning. All right, moving to the agenda item, and we have, oh, wastewater treatment plant construction update. Lila.
Well, I put together a little PowerPoint so that you can see what's going on at the wastewater plant. Things are moving along very well. And I wanted to introduce myself for the outside audience. I'm Lila Bradley. I'm the Public Works Director. And I'd like to welcome Alex Ward, Counselor Ward, to our onboard. Thank you. So I think we're getting the camera up. There we go. So I was going to do a little bit of history for you. The voters approved a bond measure for the design and construction of our wastewater treatment plant, which is now about 20, the existing plant's about 25 years old. And that was in 2004. And in '06, we moved on to the construction Phase 1A, and that was awarded. And in '09, construction was completed with change orders totaling 1% of the total contract. And that's not to say that we didn't have plenty of change orders. They just amounted to 1% at the end of the day. And the final payment was $12,515,235 for that first phase. And then in 2010, we went out for engineering design services for the Phase 1B, and that was $1,100,000. And I won't, I'll round off these numbers. I don't need to do the full number here. 2011, contract was awarded to Pacific Crest Construction for $6,700,000. And then we're looking at a construction schedule to be completed in July 2012. And we're on schedule. We're probably about 30% complete. And the Phase 1B project elements are demolishing the old buildings, and we did try and reuse as much of the structures, concrete structures, as possible. So I'll show that to you in a moment. We are constructing a pH alkalinity control building. We're constructing a thickener building. We're renovating digesters. And we're also constructing an affluent filter and ultraviolet light disinfection, so that'll take away our chlorine gas treatment. So it'll be a safer, safer environment for everybody. And we are upgrading our existing SCADA system. And that is a supervisory, I had to write it down, actually. I remembered it. And then it's a supervisory controlled data system. So it's like a DMS, a data management control. And that's what the plant talks to, the office. And then our operations can look and see what's going on at home, actually, on their computer when they're on duty. We have someone on duty 24/7 for the wastewater plant. And all of the crew trade that off. So it's Thursday to Thursday that they're, they're on duty and monitoring the plant. And then they go in and do required testing on Saturdays and Sundays for four hours each day. And then we had the yard piping and site work. And so this was, our first phase was to remove this pole building, and that will be reconstructed over at our city shop off of East Devils Lake Road. And then we had, let's see, move my slide here. So we had a chemical addition for the pH alkalinity structure, and they saw cut the top of that building off, and we were able to utilize the base of that building. And then we have the thickener building. And so they did the excavation in June and poured the foundation. That's all in place in July. And then in August, they started doing the blockwork and the steel. So right now, they're approximately at that, that last picture that you see for October 2011. So they're, they're moving right along. And this is the digester renovation. And we, our engineer tested these digesters to make sure that we could get a useful life out of them, and we can. So we were renovating those. And then this is a filtration UV building, which, for those of you who are familiar with the plant, it's down by the lagoons and the screw pump part of the plant. And so you can see them putting in those, the pilings. They were, there were 66 grout-driven piles, and those were installed from 36 to 69 feet deep. And so they just finished that in September. Yes?
What does "grout-driven"?
It means that they come in with a, a structure, and they pound that into the ground, and then they fill it with cement and concrete. So it's like a rebar. It's similar to the SBRs, actually, because they put in all of the rebar and then fill the walls. And so it's similar, but it's just underground. So they're, they're a real solid structure. And then you can see the finished product. So you can see the grout-driven piling over here. So that's, that's the large crane that was pushing those in. This crane, you can see how long those are. And so those are driven into the ground and then filled with And so you can see where they're filling it right there. And then this is all of the tops of those. And as they get this to grade, they'll cut those off so that they fit with the building. As far as, they're probably about two feet of, well, probably about a foot. You can, you can kind of tell that that's the width of them right here. And then they just vary in size, so... Any questions at all? That was about, that's where we stand. So I can come back when we're closer to the 70% stage, if you'd like.
And remind us again, what will we be seeing here? This is all foundation.
On this foundation, you'll be seeing the UV and filter system building.
Equipment.
Yes. So the UV equipment will be inside the building that's built there.
And Lila, the amount of the construction that you showed there, that's all within the amount of the bond that we had?
Yes.
The bond covers all of it then?
Right. At the, when I get further along in the project, I'll come back and show council exactly the 22 million, it was a $22 million bond. And part of that fund was to put in a sewer line along no man's land, which we put in, and some other pump stations. And so I'll do a complete breakdown of that entire amount to show, show you where everything went.
Great.
And, and part of it was also the presentation that Lou Gamazal did last week, last council meeting. That was, that was also part of the bond, was working on the road.
Mm-hmm. Other questions council has?
We've got smooth, smooth relations with the current contractor, Lila.
Yes, we have very good relations with the current contractor.
Good. Thank you.
No promises. We'll probably come in under instead of over.
Excellent.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good to have the, the updates and watch the progress.
Yes. I couldn't do it really too much sooner. There wasn't enough to show, so...
See.
It's the start of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So he didn't give you one.
All right. Next agenda item, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. First item, take a look at a draft request for proposal. We call those RFPs, in case we forget sometimes, for consulting services for vacation rental dwelling review. There's a draft in your packet. I think it's fairly self-explanatory. We can change it as you see fit. And then we'll send it out and advertise it for proposals. And we'll come back, we'll do a, an evaluation of the proposals, bring them back to you for, for your review and award.
Mr. Hocker, I've noticed that I may have jumped an item on the agenda, and I want to make sure this isn't going to foul up anything if we get right into this. The Oregon Department of Transportation Local Agreement, remember?
Yeah, that was added. Lila, you can come back up here. We're going to give you a real quick one on this.
I'm sorry, Lila.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm still going off the, the official agenda, and it's been modified tonight. And so I'm...
I'm sorry about that. It was supposed to be on, and then it was off. And then I, I'm still getting more information from ODOT. As Chester mentioned at our last council meeting, he was asking about the engineering being included in that amount. And normally, engineering would be included in an agreement of this nature or a request. The grant that was applied for usually includes engineering. This did not.
Let me interrupt you, just to clarify for everybody. This is actually, we're talking about the Bay to, or Head to Bay Trail, the bridge to connect the trail.
Correct.
Where we had had it on the agenda a couple times and getting more information and that kind of stuff.
Right.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
So it's, it's the, the bridge section. I actually was putting a PowerPoint together for you for tonight. And then when I talked to ODOT again today, a couple of the things that, that we can do is ask for more funding for the engineering part of this. Otherwise, we do not have the funding to support the project to completion. And, and that's just even the bridge construction portion of it. We found we had enough funds to match it for just the construction part of it, but not for the engineering and the environmental and all of those other surveys and, and costs, which could run up to $60,000 or more over, over time. And so it would be, you know, whether that's where council wants to spend, spend the money or not. And so I was looking at some alternate routes that might cost less money coming up ore and going down 19th Street to match into the trail possibly. And this, this section is going to be expensive. It's a large span.
We, we don't have sufficient funds to cover those extras that Lila mentioned. Council was wise to ask some questions that, to be honest with you, I missed. And taking a little closer look at this. And again, part of this is due to the transition from one employee to another, and one department to another handling this. And that's always going to be a, a compromise. And I, I mentioned that when we decided to not fill that position for a period of time, that we would have some compromises, and this is one of them. So I can't recommend signing that contract at this point unless we can get additional funding from, from the agency. We'll come back and let you know.
On top of that, ODOT was leaving whatever extra costs resulted in the construction up to us as well.
Well, actually, they, once you get to that construction level and they have ready to bid, they have the engineer's estimate. If the engineer's estimate, if it exceeds 110% or 10% of the engineer's estimate, that's when you can say, no, we don't want to move forward with these bids. But that's after you've already paid all of this engineering cost.
Right.
And study. So it's, it's a little, it's risky to, to get into it that far. And they did tell me that usually in an application like this, that the engineering is included. So I'll go back and talk to their, and it's a scenic byway funding. And, and another, another thing, I think that they, when this application was applied for, was before the Head to Bay Trail on West Devils Lake Road. And really, all of the STCs and funding went to that, that project. And so I think that's where the match, originally where the matching funds were planned on coming from. So that's part of it.
So I guess I'm, I'm wondering if this isn't the time for council to offer direction. And rather than you going back and still working with ODOT and everything, as far as some kind of level of, of interest, because I'm hearing Mr. Hocker suggest, you know, not at this time, can't recommend it. So I wonder if we don't just scrap it and look for alternative route using, you know, even if we end up using the same money, it's an alternative route.
Not matching.
Versus long-term maintenance of bridges and everything else. But I, I'm a little concerned of, of going back to ODOT and making it sound like, you know, we're interested if council is not. And, and maybe there's more information we need in order to render that opinion. So I'm, would that be right, Mr. Hocker, the...
Yeah, if, if you don't want to, if you don't want to, stupid machine, I'm, sorry. I was dual tasking here on my computer. It just shut down three times in a row. Sorry. Yeah, if, if your interest is not in the pedestrian bridge at that location, you don't have considerable interest in that, then we should not pursue this. So that's, that's up to you.
That's my recommendation.
To, to not...
I think we ought to just look somewhere else.
We extend, extend the walking path, just sort of on, on flat streets. I mean, what, little extra cardiovascular exercise and things like this, I think be a lot better than making a shortcut across a ravine. That's one obvious of a bicycle path and a...
It's a pretty, it's a, it's a major project. It's for, for a short way.
Counselors on this side?
I thought I had made my mind up, as, as Ben talked about, other than I didn't know that ODOT may be willing to pay the engineering or some of the, some of the money that we would have been on the hook for. And I don't know that it's, I, I mean, I'm kind of torn. You know, if the state has the money, and they have said it is, and it's, it's there, you know, to be used for this purpose. And we're just simply choosing not to because we just don't think it's a good idea right now. Maybe we should wait to find out if they would in fact pay for the engineering, you know, before we make that decision. Pay for some of these things that we thought we would have to pay for in order to, you know, be able to make a decision at that time.
Yeah, I think the, in addition to that, the issue is there's a matching fund, which would be scraping to fine, plus long-term maintenance of a bridge and all, all the studies and things that go with it. So there's, it, there's quite a, in my understanding, there's still a huge, significant size obligation from the, the city to this that would come in question, you know, you'd be spending. So it's, it's an alternative.
We have a review of those figures because in my, in my head, I thought the state was putting up at least three times the money. We were maybe four.
Right.
And I, I just, I'd just like to not dismiss it without taking one final look at it.
Well, keep in mind that these are parks funds, and the, and the real question is, I mean, they're grant funds and parks funds. And the real question is... I mean, they're grant funds and parks funds, and the real question is, how do you want to spend your parks funds, on this or on something else? That's, this isn't, just make sure this is clear, this isn't a general fund obligation, this is an obligation of the parks fund.
Mr. Counselor Naracus, are you...
I'm in favor of, of an alternative route, and I presume, Lila, that would be a lot less expensive than a bridge.
Yeah, so it would, it would be the sidewalk, or a wide sidewalk on ORE, and then around the corner.
That would be my preference.
On 19th.
Counselor Ward, I don't want to put you on the sport, spot since...
You know, I honestly, I'd hesitate to, for what I know, to, to agree to kill it. I mean, there's obviously a lot of work that's been put into it. I'd like to, to look into it more before I jumped on that bandwagon, but, you know, it, it sounds as if there's an alternative, I mean, certainly would be open to exploring that.
And that's what I'm hearing, council, it's not to leave the two ends of the pathway disconnected, is just find it, an alternative route to connect them, which would be something other than the proposed bridge, is what I'm hearing from, you know, the other five counselors. So unless you wanted to take a vote, consensus would be, but I, you know, in, my, my sense is, I don't want to mislead, or have Lila mislead ODOT and keep going back if, and then to have council say, thank you for all this work, but we're not interested.
I do have a PowerPoint I can show you, if you want to see it.
And that would consist...
It would, it would show the alternate route, and a view of the forest, and both ends of the project.
Would the money that's available for this bridge also be available for the alternative route, or do we talk, does that come from another fund?
It, it would not be available if we decline it, I mean, it's really specific, and the feasibility study was done, and the city did pay for that, it was $3,700, but we'd have to, we'd have to reapply, and when you let funds like this go back, you know, reapplying isn't always a good thing.
Well, somebody else will use it, which is fine.
Yeah, someone else will use it, it would go back into the pot of money.
But in fairness, the city has a matching requirement, so, you know, the bridge to round $600, or $800,000, and we, our matching fund, $162,000, you know, you still have, in essence, your $162,000 plus all the other potential costs to put towards connecting in an alternative route.
I, I think the question is going to end up being, if we're looking at dollars, is can we do the alternative route for our match? Is the alternative route going to cost us more if we don't get a grant, which we very well may not? I think those numbers would be really useful to take a look at, and I don't think we have those numbers at this point.
That's all I was trying to say, Mr. Mayor, and I didn't think about the maintenance aspect of it, so, I mean, we'd have to weigh that in, but the bridge part of it, unless we're now concerned about building a bridge, but it, it had some desirability, you know, relative to, you know, where it was going across, I mean, a lot of work, or some work has been done on it right now, up to this point.
The question I, I heard you a couple meetings ago, though, Lila, saying there's a deadline on accepting this grant, has that been extended? So, in essence, for you to do the kind of homework, to come back to say, here's an alternative route, and it costs X, versus going ahead with the bridge?
I, I don't think that they would accept a revision of this.
Timeframe, a revision of the timeframe.
And the timeframe is, it's getting close, I mean, they were, they were already talking about doing some, some extension, but I'm not sure how far they would go with that. The person I need to talk to is out of the office for a week or so, so I wasn't able to talk to them directly.
The question maybe, can we get the figures before the, before the deadline, as far as how much it would cost for the, for the alternate route?
Well, one of the things, as far as the environmental and the plant study, takes an entire year, so you're, you're looking at, you know, once we, once we get started with it, you know, they'll, they'll be fine, as long as we're, we're moving ahead, we sign the agreement, but it, by the time we build this, it's going to be probably a couple years out. And, and so it sounded like they were, you know, they, they realized that we still have a lot of work to do. But the project in the agreement, and the feasibility study that was done, is $1.7 million for the entire project, and so it's, it's an expensive project, and is it where you want the dollars, our dollars to go?
In addition to that expense that I'm not comfortable with, Lila, I'm looking at this work plan on page 172 of 206, and it seems to me that now, this, and it seems like this is a change from the last information I had, the city is now responsible for planning and permitting process, we are also responsible for engineering, design, and construction, plus a possible geotech review, and we are responsible for holding an open bidding process.
Yes, and they are actually, ODOT is actually going to do the construction bidding part of it, but we have to, that's what we would have to do, is bring it up to that point of putting it out to bid, and they would actually put it out to bid, but we would do all of the engineering, and all of the permitting, all of the study.
Didn't you say they might be willing to pay for the engineering?
Well, I would have to go back, they'd have to, you know, they can't really amend the agreement, but they would add a change possibly to the agreement, and at this late day, all I can do is, is ask, so that's what the mayor's working toward.
Again...
Okay, I can tell you really want this bridge.
Well, no, I think Mr. Hocker made the point, and Counselor Ward, the question is, you know, the cost, and can in the given time, can we get a close enough handle on the costs, the city's costs, as, you know, whether it's a bridge or an alternative route?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm hearing, when that question is asked, probably not. So based on what you know, and what I'm hearing is, we don't have engineering in the deal, though one can ask, there are other studies that have to be done that would be city costs, so it's building, and there's a lot of unknown, or you could run the risk of keep playing along with ODOT, and ask them to do engineering, and then, you know, buying time, and then run a risk of saying no. All I'm trying to get you to do is think about, you know, right now, based on what you know, and, you know, the sensitivity of it, which I think you should be, is rather than stringing somebody along, because it was, what, 2006, 2008, I mean, it's been around a long time.
It has.
So there's a lot of unknowns, and that's why we raised the question to begin with, of trying to refine some of this stuff. So personally, I'm uncomfortable with what we've got, and not willing to, you know, move ahead on a bridge, and put ODOT in a position of doing work and we telling them no.
Mayor, I would move that we direct staff to abandon this project.
The bridge project?
Bridge project.
I second that too, because I'm looking at the future too, where are we going to get the money to maintain this thing? We don't even know what maintenance is going to cost, do we have to hire another city employee for inspections and things like this, and I mean, corrosive atmosphere, and things like this, we don't have problems with.
Okay.
Things deteriorate, and what's the maintenance cost? I just, it's just scary, because there's just the unknowns. If there's an alternate route, we can go around the city streets, where we can place sidewalks and things like this, I think it would be a lot beneficial to us in going down across the ravine.
Well, we have a motion and a second to direct, inform, or direct staff to abandon the bridge project, and explore alternative route, is that...
Correct.
All those in favor, or any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
I'm opposed.
Two opposed? Ward and Ongson. Thank you. Thanks, Lila, for the work you've done on that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's just not a straightforward project.
It's all right.
Do we have time to see those alternative routes on your PowerPoint, Lila?
That's up to your schedule, up to your pleasure.
Yep, are you able to pull it up and go?
I can do that if you'd like. Actually had it up here, I just exited out.
Point, I'd like to involve our Parks and Recreation Board in this discussion, if we're going to get into these alternate choices and routes, and, and so on, just so you know that this, I think this just came about as an afterthought, and I don't, it hasn't had staff review, and I'm always afraid of showing those things that haven't, because we end up eating our words sometimes, so please, in advance, keep in mind that we're going to eat our words here.
Okay.
We can hold off with this, Mr. Hocker, if you prefer?
Well, I think that's, you know, and it'll come back to bite us, we know, but I, I, let's understand that the process would come from the committee up through and staff, but this is, so that the viewer isn't left thinking that there is no way to connect these two parts of the trail.
Okay. The yellow is showing existing sidewalk, and the red is where the bridge is proposed, and it's approximately, in their report, they had 200 feet, we were measuring, it looked like it was more than 200 feet, but the blue is where the alternate route could be on ORE, and coming around, and then meeting into the, there's actually a sidewalk along this section where the black is, that's the current trail, and then it veers off down to Spring Lake. So that, that's the alternate.
You don't know the cost?
And I think it would be more than the 162 matching funds, but...
That was my question.
Well, again, even on an interim basis, that's hard surface, you know, we can get some paint out, and paint, you know, so, so that, that trail can continue now.
Yes.
In short order, with, with very little work, quite frankly, and one of the things I think we need to think about is using our existing hard surfaces, and we may find we like this.
I was reviewing the Parks Master Plan, and the West Devils Lake Road Head to Bay Trail Route actually went through a forested area, and they ended up putting it next to the road, and I know, I do know for safety reasons, our police department prefers that, they can see what's going on in those areas, so...
Well, that's, that's nice to know, they can connect, and people can utilize systems, you know, even now, so, but we'll let the, let it play out back through the committees and, you know...
Okay, I'll, I'll go back to the, the Parks Board and talk with them.
That'd be great.
They weren't, when I, when I brought up this agreement, they, they weren't really too aware of this project, so...
Great. All right, thank you very much for showing that and bringing that up back to us.
I did have some pictures of the trees through this section, but...
Oh, yeah.
Well, we'll do that another time. Thank you.
We'll be gone.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll get back to number nine on our agenda, the request for proposal, consulting services for vacation rental dwelling review, and Mr. Hocker talked a bit about, you know, what you got in your packets, and...
I, I think it allows the, who's ever going to submit a proposal on this, some latitude, it's not, we haven't nailed everything down, it'll depend on the expertise of the individual or firm that undertakes this project, and there's a lot to be decided, this just outlines a, a general approach. But you don't want to tie the hands of the consultants so much that they can't use their skills.
Was there anything in earlier testimony from citizens that resonated as either a surprise, or, or needed to be included, or...
Well, yeah, in a, in a sense, I heard two comments that said that VRD owners should be equally represented, I think that what they meant by in numbers. I think the RFP and the process were designed to get all viewpoints, rather than an equal viewpoint from everybody. I mean, is it 50/50, is it 20/20, 20/20, is it 10/10, 10/10, 10/10, 10? And, and I don't think that's the way you can count this, I, I think that the consultant's obligation would be to make sure that all viewpoints are fairly represented, however that's done, and I think there's latitude there.
I would agree. I'd point out, in the actual text, it says, "from at least the following stakeholders", and so this, the guide of naming some of the org, groups, stakeholder groups, was just, you know, that, a guide, and "from at least" it could be expanded as I...
Certainly.
Counselors have a, have thoughts, have you gone through this, wanted to...
I just have a question, Mr. Hocker, how many people do you envision actually ending up being on this committee, approximately?
Well, that list is a good starting place.
I'm looking at the list that's in the RFP, and I'm also looking at the supplemental list, and if we had all of those people, even one from each one of those groups, we'd have a, almost an unmanageable group of people for...
Yeah, and it, yeah, but that doesn't mean it has to be done all at once. That doesn't mean you have to hear from everybody one night, or one meeting, or whatever, I mean, again, I think that, I think the idea is to allow the, the consultants some flexibility in how to approach that. How, how to hear from all these stakeholders in a meaningful way is the challenge.
So you don't envision that, those people necessarily ending up on a final committee, then?
Well, I anticipate them being heard from.
Heard from, but not on the final committee that makes, that makes a recommendation?
Yeah, I don't, I don't even know if that will be the approach, of having a committee that makes a recommendation, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point of, you know, trying to, you get representation from the entire community, and touching both these lists, and include that. I think as far as workable groups, you know, Counselor, with your, your 10 is kind of a max where you want in a group, but that doesn't preclude, you know, hearing, you can, as we, I think this RFP talks about it, the ability to go for additional research or information. I guess I envisioned this being, you know, one representative from that group, and I, looking at it, one would wonder how would a representative pop out, you're looking at this from neighbors to VRDs, I guess, not being the consultant, but clearly having a meeting, public meeting of inviting all those who meet that criteria, and letting, you know, the consultant spending time with what's expected of a representative, because this isn't an easy job.
Well, the other option of that, I suppose, would be that we could use the same application process that we have for openings on committees and boards.
I'd rather not, simply...
No, I'd rather not either, but I, I just think that that would be a way that we could weed it down to one of each category.
Yeah, but I would rather let the category pick their representative, rather than us.
Okay.
And that's, but again, this is kind of direction, the way I read this, is the consultant would assist us in determining, you know, their experience and, and best approach. But I, I think to answer one of the questions I heard, I would hear, see one from each Other, other questions, things just for clarity, and... Other, other questions, things just for clarity and. Kind of a technical question, but one, we talked about insurance and I have, because I'm not a consultant, but I'm assuming a consultant will know what insurance they either need and the amount, or is that on some kind of supplemental document?
We'll put as part of this RFP, our standard boilerplate professional services agreement and that will have the insurance requirements.
The other I didn't find in here was, and forgive me because it's not the right terminology, but how to pull the plug for everyone, because I think the bad hire on, you know, consultant, just plain bad behavior from stakeholders, you know, not going anywhere, I'm not particularly interested in letting the bill keep going.
Our, I believe, Joan can confirm this, I believe our professional services contract, in fact, even our construction contracts provide for termination of the contract and payment for work done not that far.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's of such nature that city as well as the consultant can pull the plug?
No, they can't pull the plug.
Oh.
Correct.
Okay.
It's one side.
Why?
Well, I mean, obviously if they had good cause and came to us and needed out of a contract and we weren't damaged too badly and could negotiate those terms, certainly, but it's our expectation, we hire somebody, that they will be available to complete the contract.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking more if, if the just bad behavior and progress in, you know, moving forward and the person says, I've had enough, you know, I'm assuming.
Let's assume that can't happen, but no, it's good, it's a good question and we, we can terminate the contract and pay for the work done thus far.
Do we get progress reports during this, during the process?
Oh, I think you'll not only get them, but I think you'll read about them.
Yeah. I thought I read in here where this is, this is a very public process and again, it needs to be, part of the difficulty will be for that representative of a stakeholder to be communicating back to their group, so clearly, I am informed that a lot of time is spent on the responsibility of the stakeholder representative, part of it being communication back, but also public, you know, those interested, how to get information, so I'm envisioning a heavy load of information.
Well, I was wondering about the consultant making periodic reports to us so we know what the progress is, is that something that should be in the contract?
Reporting?
So that if we get to a point where it doesn't look like we were making any progress, that we can access it if we need to?
Yeah, I would think that getting stuff back to us, right. The other thing I had was, and it's a, picking the consultant, your top member kind of talk to staff, and I wonder if, you know, that team would consist of, you know, a couple of counselors or something to?
We might, depending on, you know, it usually depends on how many you get, if we got a whole bunch of them, usually there are some that obviously aren't qualified.
Right.
We could do a two-step process, we could furnish to you the list of consultants and the brief qualifications and then select those for interview, and at that point, council, presumably not the whole council, or presumably not a quorum of council, could sit in on, on those interviews, we've done that very thing before and it's worked successfully.
Okay.
It, it doesn't, because it doesn't involve the whole council, it's not totally a, totally a fair process, but at least in the past, those members of council that participated and staff always had the same opinion.
I was looking for that link and trying to keep, you mentioned interviewing, that would be part of the process besides, it'd be a face-to-face.
Yeah, we've, we've certainly done that, for example, on the, on the auditor, we've done that on the planners for Erm Renewal and the, and the different plans that we've gone through, yeah, you've got to have, have a face-to-face interview.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I would suggest that rather calling this a consultant selection committee, that we label it something other than a committee.
The one that picks the consultant, oh, okay. Okay? And primarily because of extension of?
Well, I, I'd, we'd be involved with interviewing, I think, we'd be involved with background checks, et cetera, strike, we label it a committee, that's my fear.
Counsel?
I'm trying to think fast on my feet, which could be hard at this hour of the night, but I have a, I guess, a little bit of concern if the counselors are conducting business and basically making a decision whether that is a meeting, I realize that it's a separate issue from whether a quorum is required, but if you're getting information that then you're making a recommendation, on the basis of that information, making a recommendation to council, and then council would adopt that recommendation, I guess I'd like to look at that process a little bit.
So, well, I think.
If that's what you're talking about.
Going back to the selection process of a consultant.
Right.
That's, that's the committee is concerned with, and by using the term committee, based on our recent policy change of committees in the city, and where this, you know, is there a difference, is there, you know, trying to distinguish this specific project of selecting a consultant?
No, I don't think there's a difference, I think the, the issue though is if it's city counselors, in other words, if it's a committee business, we normally have a public notice for that meeting, it's a public meeting, my question is whether this interview then is a public meeting, that's the one I'm trying to address, if, in other words, if you have three counselors on a committee sitting in on interviews and they are then going to make a recommendation to the whole council based on what they've done, that's what I'm trying to sort through.
Okay, thank you, that's.
Could we leave the process, selection process, go for now?
Yep.
And get the RFP out?
Yep.
Sure. And I'll talk with David.
Because it'll take them a little time to prepare their proposals.
The, the other item I would have is the, I'm assuming we could, we would accept the public's notes of consultants that they would deem we ought to notify of the RFP availability?
Sure, if anybody knows of anybody that might qualify to do this work, let us know.
Address and?
Yeah, because we'll send everybody and we'll publish it.
Okay. All right, but yeah, otherwise, I'm, I'm of the opinion that you, it's pretty clear expectations and end product, despite, you know, what was suggested earlier, you know, this is end product presented, recommended regulatory approach to the city council, and you know, the, this VRT, VRD team would, you know, be setting its own, you know, mission and, you know, clearly with the guidance of a professional consultant, call on needs and, you know, the budget issue raised is a good one, that's why we're doing RFPs, to see what this might cost. Counselor Noregus?
Mr. Mayor, under the VRD team and establishing a mission, is mission synonymous with goal in your opinion, are we establishing a goal by establishing a mission? I think, I think we need to have goals, myself, that we can measure ourselves against.
And, and wouldn't that not be the end product? The goal is to, as a VRD team, to present a recommended regulatory approach, one developed by consensus, you know, going on down.
Yeah, I believe you're right, yes.
The way I interpreted all this was the working group, you know, the VRD working group would, part of their process of working as a group, have to have some understanding and commitment, time, agreeing to meet and, you know, not switching players all the time and being, you know, behavior, good behavior. Other thoughts with, you know, minor editing then could go out, would welcome suggested consultant addresses and so we could send, but otherwise, certainly there's public policy groups at universities and, you know, in the state that we'd be targeting to go with that. Is there any specific action, Mr. Hawker, that you think we need?
Just consensus.
Consensus, so consensus-wise with minor edification?
Yeah.
All right, it's a go.
Thank you, Mayor, the next item, I had the opportunity to meet with three of our newer council members and our, and at that time, our councilman-elect, and to bring them up to speed on where I think the council left off, the issue of septic and septic systems around Devil's Lake, we actually maybe got a little bit past that in this, into some alternatives that hadn't been, that I hadn't brought to council attention, but just very briefly, I think, I heard two or three comments in the room, one of which was mine, several of which were from the council members, this is complicated, and yeah, it is, and for that reason, rather than ask council to make a decision, for example, on, on a possible regulatory ordinance, I think it needs some more study and that to me means workshop, so I'd like to see if you would entertain a workshop, let's say two hours, to discuss not only the septic around the lake, but alternatives to regulating septic systems, because there are some, and the purpose of workshops is, is so that council can get educated on the issues, it is not to make decisions, because that's a public process, that's a formal process, that's not a workshop, that's the time where the public process is where citizen involvement is encouraged, workshops are mostly just to study the facts of the issue, look at some alternatives and not make a decision. So I'm saying a two-hour workshop, I threw a memo to you in the packet with some possible dates, November 7th would be the, an early opportunity and we can be ready by November 7th, November 21st is another date, and generally, keep costs down, keep our overtime down, we try to do workshops during the day, and looking up and down the council row here, I think that most counselors can be available daytime, and again, it's a workshop, we don't generally televise those, they're open to the public, the public's welcome to come and listen and get educated too, so what do you think?
If I can, is there any reason why a Tuesday or Wednesday, but I'm thinking?
It works for staff, whatever works for council.
But during day?
If it's during the day, because we don't want a conflict with the planning commission, but.
Right, so again, during the day, I'd be, I'm just thinking of Mr. Quan, he's proposing on Monday though.
Monday's fine, after nine, 10 o'clock, it's fine with me too.
Oh, okay, all right.
Nine, 10 o'clock, that's right, I shop early on Mondays.
Okay.
Is there, is there a time estimate on this?
Two hours.
Two hours, all right.
We, we normally do our, our workshops in a two-hour time block and try to stick to that so people can make other commitments.
Okay. Counselor Ward is, you're one of the few that work for a paycheck, so, you know, is there a better time?
I think I'd make time for it, you bet.
No, I'm, I'm thinking.
Monday or Tuesday would be fine, two hours.
Better, better time of day, morning, afternoon, that works better for you?
It's all pretty much the same, I can move things around, I think.
Knowing, enough in advance, okay.
Yeah, you bet, you bet.
Anybody else have a morning, afternoon, or is there?
One or two o'clock would be a good time if that works for everybody else.
So could we hone in on a Monday then, is, the proposed dates were even as early as the 7th?
Let's do the 7th if we can.
Is there any reason why that is not, okay?
Seven?
Seven, that November 7th at two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Let's do it.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor, then, it's that time of year where we start taking a look at the holiday schedules and there's two dates in particular that I'd like you to look at, one is December 26th, a Monday, it's been traditional with council not to have a meeting on that particular day, but we can, it's your pleasure, if we know in advance, we can usually schedule around it, only in the event of an emergency then would we have to call it another meeting and at another time?
My preference would be to nix it unless we had an emergency, is that with council okay?
The downside of that is it could double up on your other meetings, I mean, it could make some of your other meetings a little bit longer, but we have hearing schedules and so on, so the sooner we know, the better, the other, the other meeting, and, and I think there's no reason to cancel it, other than sometimes we find that people are traveling over the Thanksgiving holiday, which is?
Oh, the 28th, November 28th would be that council meeting?
Would be that council meeting immediately after Thanksgiving, if there's no quorum problems, I don't see any issue, but if your, if your travel schedules are.
And this side, everybody in town on November 28th? All right, shouldn't be a quorum problem then, we're good.
That's all I have, Joan, did you have anything?
I know.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Say, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Do you mean you're done with your comments?
Yep, down, discussion, holiday.
I was, okay.
Then I forget something.
I was trying to follow the pit, no, I was just wondering if you could quickly let us know, and I kind of know, because I went by there Friday, about the Schooner Creek road project and the water.
Sure.
24-inch water.
The 24-inch main has been installed, but it's not connected, it's, it was going through testing last time I checked, where they fill it with water and pressure test it and chlorination, and because there's wetlands right adjacent to it, they have to haul off the water rather than drain it, there's a lot of water, I think that there's plans to run a truck for a day to remove the water from that, the chlorinated water from that and put it in an empty lagoon at, at the plant, I believe it's supposed to be. I believe it's supposed to be this week, late this week, in, assuming everything goes right, in service. Right now, the bypass is still in service and will remain in service until they hook up the 24. That's expected to be done in one day. But quite frankly, I don't want the contractor to hear this, but I don't really care because we're in good shape on our Drift Creek Road and on our storage. So even if it took two days, I'm not concerned. I see very little situation that could occur at this point that would, that would be alarming. I think we're, I think we're good.
And, Mr. Rucker, you, we were talking about this some other time, and you reminded us that water is traveling both directions, the Drift Creek as well as through Schooner Creek.
And it will continue to do so. What that does, what that, even though the 24-inch is so large, and until you actually see that piece of pipe, it doesn't sound that big. But, I mean, when you see that pipe, it is enormous. But even though it's so big, there is a certain amount of friction loss to it. And we want to have all the roots opened up, and the Drift Creek Road bypass will stay permanently open. And it reduces the friction loss and therefore will save a few electrons and a few dollars on operating, on the pump.
Good. Great. Anything else for Mr. Hucker? Thank you.
We're in good shape on that. And I think the road is supposed to be open a couple of weeks? Okay, a couple of weeks.
Good. All right, then, let's move ahead to public hearing. Public hearing to receive written and/or oral testimony concerning the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, ZOA 2011-05, building height amendments.
Council has a request to continue this to November 28th, so we just need a motion.
Entertain a motion to-
To continue to November 28th at the city council meeting at 7:00 PM at City Hall.
So moved.
Seconded. We have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to November 28th at this location in 6:00 PM timeframe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I am going to abstain.
Okay. Now, next item would be an opportunity for public comment on proposed new convenience fee to be applied to the credit card payments made to the city, a new fee related to delinquent utility bills, and a fee for court referrals. Do we have a presentation?
Debbie?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Debbie Mamon, Finance Director. And tonight, I've submitted three fees for your consideration. Two of them would be new fees, and one of them's more a housekeeping item. We have advertised notice of these fees, so public can comment if they wish. It's not a public hearing, but it is an opportunity for them to comment. The first fee relates to the payments that the city receives on its water sewer bills and municipal court citations. We have not, in the past, nor currently, accepted credit cards. Primary reason for this is our bad debt on our utility billing is extremely low. And as you all know, accepting credit card payments incurs a cost. However, we do get a lot of requests from people to accept credit card payments. So what I would like to propose is to offer the availability of paying by a credit card, but offsetting the cost of that with a convenience fee. This request is a little unusual because I don't have a fixed fee amount. I actually have submitted a request for a range between $1 and $5. I would initially start off with a $2 fee. The goal I have is to match the cost, the revenue that we charge from the convenience fee with the cost of the credit card, so that we're neither making money nor losing money. Because I certainly don't want to make money off of extra fees, but we don't want to affect the revenues in our water and sewer departments either. And so my plan would be to review the costs and revenues. Currently, I review that on a quarterly basis and just adjust that so that we can keep that, keep that even. I don't want to wait too long so that we don't get too much of an overcharge going on or too much of an undercharge going on.
And utility bills like that are paid on a monthly basis now, or quarterly?
Yes, we bill that monthly. Online payments are made through a program called Express Bill Pay. We would utilize that same program for master Visa card. So there's no different process. It's just if people love on to pay their bill, they'll now have an additional option to pay with a credit card. And it is optional. People do not have to pay that way. But if they want to and the convenience fee is acceptable, then it is an option available to them. My second fee that I'm requesting is very similar. Earlier, you had approved a new system, or an upgraded system, for the community center. That system has the ability to pay for classes and renew memberships through its system online and also to pay with credit cards, and that would be through their new system. So I'd like to set up a similar situation where we have a range between $1 and $5, and that's reviewed quarterly, just so that we charge enough to collect, to offset the costs and no more. That wouldn't go in effect, obviously, until they start using their new system sometime later. And that would be through their new system, not through the Express Bill Pay that we use for utility billing.
I noticed your, your proposed range is the same, but the starting points are different, and the reason would be?
For the utility billing fee, we, it's really hard to kind of determine how much it's going to cost when you don't have any history to go off of, and there's just so many variables that constitute the amount that they charge. So we called a few different cities that do accept credit cards, and that's how we based our estimate. That's off of utility payments. That's a different category than recreation. It's a different charging formulas. The $2.50 is Recreation Center's best estimate as to what we need to charge to recover the cost, so. They charge different amounts depending on what kind of a payment it is. It's really fun to try to figure out.
Yeah. Please.
The credit card companies that you use to retrieve your money charge different fees based on the quantity. So that, that would be changing all the time as you are getting more and more people doing it. So it needs to be flexible.
Exactly, yeah, that's one of the many variables. It's the quantity, the type of payment, there's just a lot. And who you're using, what bank is funding it, it's-
All right, you've got, I process credit cards, and if you can figure out how to read those statements.
I have not been able to figure it out.
I haven't, I haven't.
I think the best way is look at your history and estimate, you know?
I say, because it'll be on a sliding scale, then it'll go up and down. But it depends, because some cards they charge you more, and some charge, you know, boards and things like this from using the cards and just-
Yeah.
So again, it seems like a good time to remind those listening that the use of a credit card is a convenience, but there's a charge typically to the merchant, and in this case, it would be the city being charged. So that's what we're talking about, is passing that charge back to the user.
Right, right. And so we'll separately track the costs and the revenue and compare that every quarter, and that will be the basis of any change that we make. It will be numbers-driven. The third request is more of a housekeeping item. We, it came to our attention that we're charging two fees in court that are really driven by state statute, but they're not on our fee schedule. So I'd just like to get them on our fee schedule so that they're there. I've referenced the state statutes that govern that. It's, one is for a referral to an alcohol program, and the other's a referral to a-
An alcohol treatment program?
Alcohol treatment program, sorry. And one's for a marijuana diversion program. We don't have very many of those. It's very few, but-
Have it on the schedule.
Would like to be nice and clean since we're changing it.
Great.
And on that, I didn't reference the fee. I just referenced the state statute. So as the statute changes, the amount, just follow with that. Currently, the fee for the alcohol referral is $75, and for the marijuana is $333. And that's not all, that's all the components. So some of those fees go to other agencies, and it's not all of ours.
And who, who has charged that fee? For, for the alcohol and the marijuana?
When is the citation issued? And the judge determines that it's appropriate for referral to an, to either a diversion program or a treatment program. The person undergoing the treatment pays that fee.
Thank you. Questions from council of staff on this proposal before we take public comments?
I just wanted to clarify, because I talked with Debbie just briefly tonight, that as I understand it, what this, the fee resolution would do for the credit card payments, two things. One is council is basically authorizing a $5 maximum fee and is delegating to staff the authority to adjust the fee as necessary to basically equalize the cost, so there's no cost to the city. And the city's not profiting from that. So I, and that's going to be done periodically every three months. Those standards are not actually written into the resolution at some time. We may, may want to officially adopt that. But I think it's important just to clarify it on the record so that council understands that it's delegating its authority to do that. And I think that would be appropriate.
To move within that range, then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That is, that's helpful. Any other questions of staff? Thank you, Debbie. This would be the time, then, where public comments would be appropriate regarding these proposed fees. It would appear we've lost our vocal audience.
Nobody's under 21 out there.
So how would I proceed, this not being a hearing?
We just proceed to the next item on the agenda.
Our next item, huh? Thank you. So then, resolution for approval, we have one. And this is resolution number 2011-29, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting an administrative fee schedule for the Lincoln City Municipal Court and Finance Department. I would-
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Please.
Don't we need to close the public hearing?
It's not a, it wasn't a formal public hearing.
It was a continued, it was a continued-
No.
Wasn't it?
No, that was, it was just an opportunity for public to comment.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
A second?
Seconded.
We have a motion for approval with a second. Resolution number 2011-29, a resolution of the City of Lincoln City adopting an administrative fee schedule for the Lincoln City Municipal Court and Finance Department. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Please.
Do we need a roll call?
Oh, do we?
For the fee, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor. I apologize.
So all those in favor were ayes. Any opposed? Hearing none? Great. This is, this next item is, says ordinance for adoption. What I'd like to do is bring it up for discussion, if that would be all right, rather than necessarily taking action on it tonight, if we could, because I suspect that there needs to be some changes. If that's all right with council?
Sure.
This is, so you don't have anything in your packet? Is that what you're trying to say?
I was trying to tell you, it's, you know, big letters.
Oh, does, all right. Well, let me assist you in, you know, if you could just visualize. Sit back and visualize. This is around, let me stage it, with the new business incubator committee that council had said, go ahead and reform, revitalize, and move ahead with. In reading the ordinance, original ordinance 208, 2008-08, it came to my attention that there might be an opportunity to expand a couple of areas, primarily membership qualifications and residency for committee members. Because I think the, otherwise, the ordinance fits very well. I had, and so I have a suggestion. If I can talk to you about the current criteria, the changes that I'd like to see and kind of why I'd take input. But under qualifications, it's a five-person committee as proposed by ordinance. One of them is member of city council. I wouldn't propose any changes there. The other one is, one member shall be from the Office of Small Business Administration or the Office of Minority Women and Emerging Small Business Resources, or, and what I'm suggesting, oh, oh, or, it says, similar state or federal agency. I would say, suggest that we don't have Small Business Administration here. We have a Small Business Development Corporation. We have, I needed this group to be expanded, I think, to be legitimate. And what I'm proposing is we, you know, talk about local, state, and federal agency, something in economic development, and add or nonprofit organization whose purpose is economic development. So just trying to keep that same category of a broader base, but expanding it, because in this area, there are some existing economic development organizations, and this would provide opportunity. So there's a, that would be a modification, expanding. Then we have a category that currently is, two members shall be involved in business in the City of Lincoln City. And I am suggesting that as well as that is, that we look beyond just business in Lincoln City and perhaps add something or have background or experience in business development or related fields. Reason being is, as we're already finding out, people in business are already busy, and we're in a community of a lot of retired folks who have a great deal of business background and expertise. And I didn't want to be challenged on whether that was in business. And so by simply saying "or" experience and background, that would allow us to consider retired folks who have background in business. Then the fourth criteria is a, so far, that is four members. The fifth member is to be eligible for appointment, oh, I'm, need to go back up to number three. The four members so far, or five members, I'm mistaking. One is city council, two is, one, one member from city council, one member from the agency or nonprofit economic development, two members with business background, retired or in, and then the fifth is just an at-large person. So it doesn't necessarily have to be in business, some kind of skill set, but purely at-large, though category. So that's your five candidates' areas. The piece on eligibility is one that I'm suggesting we expand their residency. To be eligible for appointment to and service on the committee, a person at the time of appointment and throughout the person's term of service must be a resident of the city or resides within the Lincoln County School District for Taft High School. So expanding to a little broader base of the Taft High School residency. In addition, residency requirements shall not apply- In addition, residency requirements shall not apply to the principal appointed in, that was the state agency. So again, understanding the state agency person or nonprofit economic development isn't likely to be living in Lincoln City or Taft High School. So a broader brush there. So those were just kind of the cleanup things. The ordinance that's in, that was in the packet doesn't reflect that. And so I wanted to get it out and have us talk about it, see if you had any issues with that, so that we could then instruct council to bring us back an ordinance that reflected these kind of things that we could approve. Is there any concerns on, from anyone regarding these?
I recommend that we go ahead and send it to council for revision.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, or I want to cut off discussion on that? All right, there's a motion then and a second to send recommended changes to council for revision and brought back next meeting?
That?
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Hearing none? Need to go to comments from council. Councilor Ward, what, welcome again. Appreciate having you with us, filling out the council. Any comments you'd like to share or announce?
You know, I don't have anything specific. Thank you for the warm welcome, certainly.
Good. Counselor? Nothing.
Glad to be here.
Senator Rikus? Councilor Rikus?
I attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Bend last weekend, I think it was, or the weekend before, and attended some interesting workshops. If any counselors are interested in picking my brain, I am available.
Good. Thank you for doing that on your own time. And I would have to admit, I've told some people I attended the same conference and only saw, you know, Councilor Rikus a couple of times. Not that he wasn't there, because I know he was there. I saw him in the distance. He wasn't in the same workshops that I was in. So I think we got good coverage from the both of us of hitting just about all the workshops. This side, Councilor Sprague, please.
We have a person who resigned from the planning commission to come on to the city council in the presence of Alex Ward. And so there's an opening on the planning commission, and the applications are available at the city recorder's office. We will use the same process that we have for committees. There'll be an application, there will be interviews and background checks, the whole works. And then a, there will be an appointment to the planning commission.
Actually, I think they could get the application online now. If they go to the website, you know, W W E L Lincoln City dot org. Thank you. Eggleton, what might you have tonight?
Person that had a, some community services tell me that he came to the city, background checking, everything is. Took care of him without a problem. He was, how fast and easy it was.
An individual actually doing community service with the city? That's, that's good. Thank you, sir. Counselor?
I just want to welcome Alex Ward to the ward.
To the ward.
To the ward. There's two of us. And remember, we're the closest to Rhodes End, so I hope they get your phone number, too, okay?
You could perhaps post it at the shop.
It will be posted, don't worry.
Thank you, sir.
Well, it's nice to have two of you in Ward Three now, sharing the joy.
You bet, you bet, shouldering the load.
You know, I have a couple, just want to remind our citizens that there is an election November eighth. And I know North Lincoln Fire District has a levy on that, so I'd encourage people to educate themselves about all the issues on the November eighth election before they vote, but for certain to vote. And Councilor Eggleton, you're going to be gone next meeting, is that? Okay. Got that. And, you know, actually, again, I hate things in hindsight, but I've got to share with the public the, one, good weather we had this last weekend, and the variety of things that were going on in town continues to amaze me. Because unfortunately or fortunately, I'm, but seem to be attending most of them now. The kite festival, you know, I think went off very well. We had great weather on Saturday. As they gave me the mic, enough wind picked up automatically from the political talk, I think. I know Let There Be Arts had a nice event out at Sitka Center, and they do a lot of work with our youth and art. Cascadehead Music at the Cultural Center. Again, if you haven't been to the Cultural Center, you know, the program was superb on Sunday night. You know, speedboat races on Devil's Lake, the time trials. I even bumped into some weddings in town. Again, reaffirming that the coast is a place where romance happens. And Farmer's Market, so I-
The Harvest Festival, too, Don.
Harvest Festival, you're correct. I didn't make that one. So, but, yeah. So nobody should have a, an excuse about sitting home. There's plenty to do. The other, again, thank you, gentlemen, all of you, for the pink ribbons, and would again remind our citizens of Breast Awareness, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage them to not only get checked out, but pursue flu shots. It's flu shot season. With that, hearing none, I'll adjourn the meeting.